Evening, everyone. Welcome to our school committee meeting of this Wednesday, September 18th, 2019, 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call our meeting to order. Thank you. Could we all first please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just to remind everyone that we are being broadcast live as well as being recorded for future rebroadcast. At this time, let's call our student representative, Mr. Will Champagne up. Continue the fine Champagne tradition of student updates.
It is Michigan night, as everybody can tell, some of us watching at home.
So, homecoming is coming up on October 19th, and tickets will be on sale soon. There's an upcoming college fair for students, for juniors and seniors, so students looking for college will be able to begin looking at schools. Class elections happened this past week, so now classes have their class officers. And National Honor Society invited a large amount of people to join, and now people are waiting for their interviews, which are also coming up soon. And the Tiger Open is this Saturday, which is the golf tournament, so should be interesting.
And I noticed that Balfour is downstairs, so the ring night is tonight, so they're selling rings downstairs for sophomores, and I believe they're selling, Mr. Romano, in the next two days, lunches as well?
Yes, they'll be here for lunches as well, and the ring night where they pick them up, I think, is the second Wednesday in October.
So, if sophomore parents were not able to get here tonight, they can send the order form in tomorrow at lunchtime, and they can do it also tomorrow is what, Thursday or Friday as well? So they can fill them out and send them in. All right. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Well, will you be our representative all year?
I will be.
Wow. Excellent. Very good. Good for seeing you again.
At this point on agenda, we have our public comment communications section.
The school committee welcomes public comment on items that are within the scope of the school committee's responsibilities but are not on our agenda this evening. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item, old business. Does anyone have any old business they would like to discuss this evening? How about any new business? Seeing none, we will move on to our superintendent's report, Mr. Mainz.
Very good, thank you. So the first thing on our agenda is the district safety plan. A little snafu last meeting, we thought that you had already received them. I believe at this point, everybody now has a copy of it. Officer Feloni is here, as well as Mr. Romano and myself. This would be the, in essence, I guess it's the second reading, and I think we would be bringing this to a vote on October 4th, I believe it is, which is our first meeting in October. And so what we asked is that if there are any questions, Officer Feloni and Mr. Romano are here to answer any questions you may have had from the content. The one thing that I will share with the committee is that it is a work in progress. Our goal with this was to initiate and have in place a updated safety plan that we knew and we know that will, over time, continue to be enhanced and reviewed and revised going forward. There's a number of details that Officer Feloni and I talked about just the other day, some packets of information that I'll be sharing with them, and my sense is that that committee will not meet as, maybe as often as they did this year, but they will continue to meet because I do believe that there will be some additional things that we're going to want to add to it. But the purpose tonight was, was to see if the committee had any specific questions they would like answered, or if there's any, anything that they can share information.
I had a question. For personnel, it seems like there's a lot of assignments, but I noticed there was a note for like a media coordinator. Is that going to be assigned on the fly?
No, that would be me.
Okay.
That would be me. No one will be speaking to the media other than me.
Okay.
Which is standard, actually, our standard operating procedures, is that the superintendent is the person who does the speaking, and that for the obvious reasons is to avoid miscommunications. But the information would be coming to me from a number of different sources. It could be the state police, it could be local police, it could be Mr. Romano or the administration that could be bringing me information as to what's going on and where we are before I would go in front of any of the media.
And I think you would be the one who would like hand out basically talking points, so if like a teacher was kind of shanghai'd by the media, like this is what they say. Should be.
Basically.
Basically, call the superintendent.
Yeah. It gets referred to me and so forth. And then, and again, it would be on a structured basis. We would have a meeting in advance of all the people that are involved, so if we have the local police, and we have the fire department, and we have the state police and so forth, each of their individual liaisons will come and will get together, and we will formulate the presentation to the media.
Okay.
So that we're all on the same page, and we're all hearing the same talking points.
And then in terms of just, like if it was an ongoing issue and media were coming to the space, I assume possibly the police would be keeping them at a safe distance and that?
Yeah. In fact, I think there are specifications in here, or if they're not in here, they will be in here, the media wouldn't be permitted to come to the scene, per se. We would have a separate area for them to, if it was going to be a press conference or for any comments made to the media, they would certainly not be allowed on the scene or at the scene.
We talked about the fire station as a place that they could be.
Right, right. Or even the municipal center.
Yeah.
The one other area that was in there that I thought might raise some questions is the idea of the reunification, which is a very difficult process because people want to get their children as quick as they can, or grandchildren, whatever the case may be. But there really needs to be a structure and an organization to this so that we are able to keep accurate record of the students, who picked them up at what time, so that we can keep an accurate record that everyone is accounted for as well. Now, this is, an example of this was when we had the carbon monoxide situation at the police station, the memorial of the, I'm drawing a blank.
Early Childhood Center.
Early Childhood Center, thank you. Drawing a blank for me. And that's exactly what we did, because obviously, parents couldn't get here, but grandparents could get here. And of course, they have to be on the emergency call list and so forth, and there's a check-in and a check-out process, and so they're checked when they come in, they're also checked when they leave, so that they double-check to make sure that we're keeping an accurate record. So that is something that the students were relocated, so parents had to come to a building that they were not familiar with to get their children. We've had this happen as well, when we had to evacuate this building, everyone went to the municipal center as well as to the intermediate school at the time, and then everybody came back here. We did not release anybody at any of those other two locations. They came back here, we did a complete check on all students, faculty, staff, everybody was accounted for before we allowed anyone to be released to the parents. So that's, it's always a trying piece of it, but that is, and we have some rallying points, and I met recently, Brett wasn't able to be there, but with Chief Migliolico and with the town administrator, Mr. Wojcik, and Chief Vincent, and John Furno, and that's what I'm talking about as to continual work. There's always going to be ongoing work that we're going to have to do on this, and so we're going to continue to meet, but this is, I think that it's a great starting point, which, again, I gave credit to them two weeks ago, I give credit to them again for the process of putting it together, and we'll continue to work on it.
And we've talked, has it been made available on the website? Is it going to be?
As of right now, it hasn't, because I wanted to go through the process and so forth.
But that's the plan.
And we had some discussion. I don't think that we really want to put it on the website, I think, because it does provide information that I don't think we necessarily want the public to have access to, so.
So is there any information that would be given to the public? Any, want to say abbreviated version?
We'd have to think about that for a second, because you want to be careful about what the information that you share and how you make it available. There are some, I'm sorry, but there are some creative and crazy people out there.
I'll follow up on Becky's question. And I don't think this happens, but maybe it does. Media training for someone like you, does MAS do that for you guys, and maybe something they should think about, possibly?
I have never been made aware of anything like that.
Yeah.
And I can assure you that in my graduate work, that was not something that they trained me in as well.
Some of those online, the ISO courses, one of them does include, I think there's a media module there. I don't know if it's very helpful, I never did. Pretty sure there's one.
And are there, not just for like the media coordinator, whoever, but are there, I guess, redundancies, backups identified for positions?
Right. If not, me, who?
Yeah. Well, that's worked out. Okay.
And we tried to address, Brett, I think we tried to address as many possible scenarios, hazards, as we could, and unfortunately, there's a binder of some additional things that came through just recently by way of email to my office that I'm going to share with Brett and Josh and Desi, and things that they may want to review to check to see if we've addressed them appropriately, and if there are some things that we did not put in there. And there's, you know, all kinds of things that you just wouldn't think about that need to be in those types of plans, possible hazards or emergency situations and so forth. So, I don't think you can ever make it completely inclusive, but we'll do the best we can to make it as inclusive as possible.
So, and then follow up on Kelly's question, just, you know, I think I agree, having the full plan out there sounds problematic for numerous reasons, but, you know, it'd be nice if we can maybe look into other best practices around what information you can share, because I know the public would definitely be interested in stuff like that, but, you know, I definitely understand that you can't share too much there, so.
Perhaps we can do an abridged type of thing.
Or at least some guidelines, and I know they're probably not things that people would look at if something really happened, but like if there's an emergency, if there's a, something at the school, the last thing we need are 400 parents rolling into the school to pick up their child, and that's going to be their first instinct, but that's going to hinder.
Yeah, even if it's, you know, if it's a parent's guideline for, in the case of an emergency, this is what we'd like you to do, because we do have a plan in place, and we'd like you to let us, you know, execute that plan.
Without explaining the plan.
Yeah. So it might be, yeah.
In detail.
Something else on top of all the rest of the work you've done that kind of helps along those areas.
Yeah. That's an excellent point. We probably should sit down and look at that as a, coming up with a consolidated or concise overview type of thing that we can share with parents.
And it would probably be like, you know, if something happened, it would be in that, I think we'd put that in your first one call, too, so like, we know, this is what we're going to say as far as like, please don't come to the school to get your child, your child will be available at this location, you know, or whatever. Just have that kind of verbiage prepared for when something, if something happens.
I think you may want to consider including what you are going to be teaching the students in terms of their responsibilities. I mean, I think a lot of it is just following directions as they come, but I think sometimes parents can be tempted to say, no, don't do that, just hop out the closest window and run, you know. So if there is a way to communicate also what the expectations for the students are, that's not a bad thing to be able to have, but I understand, again, you know, you want it to be measured because you don't want the, don't show all your cards, I get that.
Right.
I did want to ask, too, I noticed that, I think that one of the secondary reunification points was the senior center and the Methodist Church. I was wondering about that. It seems like such a small, are you comfortable with that location?
Yeah, we did tours, Desi and I did tours of all the locations. I think we had, I think the one location we haven't got confirmation on is the Methodist Church. We included it in the list, but we haven't actually been able to contact anybody. We did a walk-through of the senior center, and we know we can't fit all of the kids in, you know, in the senior center, and actually the post office as well. I spoke to the postmaster myself there. And we wouldn't necessarily walk the kids from the middle school, say, down to the senior center, but certainly the primary school is a lot closer, so that might be a rallying point for those kids.
Are you more concerned with the traffic and picking up?
I am. Again, if, so that's the thing where, you know, on the one hand, it's useful if parents already know this could be a potential reunification point, on the other hand, if you're trying to get first responders down there, and every parent who picks up Twitter is just bolting to Main Street.
Yeah. It's going to be tough.
Yeah. It's a small town, so, yeah.
The other piece of that is that, and this has happened, is that we had to actually literally block off the access points so that we can effectively, we did this when we, when we had, the temperature was 98 at the, in the opening day, we had, actually had Brett and the other police and other vehicles that were blocking off all of the access points, so that our kids could walk from the primary school just down to the elementary and down to the, into the middle school, middle school as well. So we would do the same thing if we were transporting, moving our kids down to any of those buildings. Again, just based on geography and location, that's really the issue, but we would ensure that traffic wasn't coming up those roads, they'd be, the access points would be blocked as best we possibly could.
Okay.
For safety reasons.
So I just had a thought as we were discussing it. So, we're talking about guidelines for parents. If we come up with something, is it appropriate to put it in the student handbook for each of the schools, or is that something?
Yeah, I would even maybe say as a separate thing that goes on the first packets.
And add-on to that or something?
Yeah, maybe a first aid packet item.
It's not a bad idea if you have a one sheet that somebody could theoretically put on the refrigerator, but, you know.
Yeah, something said home, something that's on the website, that, again, you know.
But it's going to be in generalities, because you're not even going to know what the situation is.
Yeah, it's really just got, you know, this is, you should, don't come right to the school.
Don't rush to the school. Wait for further instructions.
Don't call the school.
Yeah, we could put other, like, it could be the kind of card that you would want to put in your refrigerator, because maybe it includes like, you know, this is what to do if your child says that, you know, somebody's talking about hurting themselves or hurting others or something like that. It can have all that kind of information, and it's, you know, so it's got the basics of that. I'm going to assign somebody to do this.
Now that we've given you another thing to do.
You know, it's an unsettling topic, and, but it's always been an unsettling topic, you know. I can remember back in the Stone Ages, when there was a bomb scare in the building, they did the smart thing, and they put us all in the gymnasium. I'm not sure how that was going to keep us safe if there was a bomb in the building, but that's what they did.
We went under your desk. You remember that?
I do remember duck and cover. Anybody?
Way back. I'm going way back.
Mr. Villamere is the only one who remembers duck and cover.
You know, I think, you know, things like that happen when people haven't thought it out in advance, and I think if you have it thought out in advance, and you have something, and you can go to it and say, okay, this happened, so we need to do this, you know, steps one, two, three, four, five, and just follow that, and you don't forget to do things, and then you have a better idea of what to do.
Yeah.
So it's not, let's put everybody in one place where, you know, one bomb can do even more harm. It just helps you to have something so that when everything is just falling apart, you don't have to make up the plan. You just have something that you can rely on and just go to until Brett takes over.
It's important to understand that even with a plan, there's no guarantee that it's.
Oh, it is. Yeah, and I would say, you know, I think we're all sitting here kind of, you know, in our back of our minds at least, you know, assuming the worst, we're talking a school shooter or a bomb or whatever, but, you know, it could be a weather situation, so whatever guidelines you put together, make sure it counts for, I guess, all those types of things, even let parents know that, you know, we could have an emergency situation because of some kind of a weather event or.
It could be Miss LaClare sets off something cooking enchiladas.
Where to find the information, rather than having everybody call the school, you know, look at this website, look at this Twitter, you know, that's where we'll give the information.
We had, Brett and I were talking yesterday about that, and one of the things that we'd like to do during the course of this year is to get like a plaque and laminate it for everybody who has a responsibility, so that they immediately have it, and they're not carrying that around. They've got this foot card that says, step one, step two, step three, and type of thing. So, but that's going to take us a little bit of time to process and put together, but it's a starting point.
Okay. Any questions on that? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Brett, thank you very much for coming back out tonight.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
As you owes you.
Josh, thank you. Just a quick update on the one-to-one Chromebooks, they, we have not ordered them as of yet, but we did get confirmation, and I did speak with a representative from Senator Fatman's office today, that we are on track, and it's just a question of now them releasing the funding and then going through the process of ordering, prepping them, and getting them in. I hope that by the middle of October, everything will be going at the middle school and at the elementary school, because there's another process that needs, we need to get those iPad 4s from the middle school down to the elementary school, and they will need to be cleaned up and reprogrammed and so forth, so there's a little bit of work to be done. But we, the confirmation is there. Ms. Keegan and Ms. Souza put together the grant application, everything went through, and we're good there, so hopefully, we'll keep looking, and hopefully there'll be, the money will be there, and then as soon as it's there, we'll figure out the process for ordering and getting them out. Something that I just wanted to share with the committee that we should probably start thinking about a little bit is a little bit on the time schedule. As you know, we do have negotiations with the Douglas Teachers Association and the custodians and cafeteria staff coming up this year, and we should, I think it would be prudent to get together and have some initial conversations with the negotiation members of that group, just to get a little idea as to thoughts, schedules, and so on and so forth. One of the things that we had talked about is that we may be able to do afternoon meetings because of the availability of everyone, so that might be much more helpful than the night meetings, which can run a little bit late. And so if, what I would suggest is maybe reach out to the members on that, including the alternate, about maybe a date coming up in the very near future for us to get together and discuss a little bit.
I believe it's me and Kelly and Lisa, who you are.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I would say sooner than later, just for us, even, you know, I don't think any of us has participated in a negotiation as well, so just even for you to kind of walk us through what they typically go through, you know.
I'll leave more on Ms. Keegan, because she does it more, she's done it way more than I have.
Yeah. So like, yeah, just for us to kind of, you know, start getting, you know, familiar with the process.
So I'll reach out to you guys, and I'll make a note here to see if we can get some date schedules as soon as possible. Just to put it on everybody's sort of front burner, if that's why I wanted to mention it tonight.
Oh, you might want to contact a lawyer, too.
Yes, oh, great, yeah.
Come in and kind of instruct everybody, too, from past experience.
Dates, yeah. Okay.
Good point.
I'll get that out. The signed document for best buddies, excuse me. Recently, and I can't remember, I don't think I brought it tonight. The document was signed, you guys signed it the other night, two weeks ago. I had to get the DTA to sign it, which they did.
Okay.
We had four copies. You took the three. They've got the one. You're looking at me, you're making me very nervous right now.
[laughing].
The answer to the question is, it has been signed, and it's in your office. It has been signed.
Oh, my yummy buddy.
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody has signed it.
It's been fully signed at this point. This is an update to let us know that it's been fully signed.
I'm getting confused, it's two of them, you've got to get signatures on, so.
The reason for being there was at the time that you signed it, the Douglas Teachers Association had not been able to sign it.
Correct.
So it has, it has been, it has been signed.
Okay.
And while we're talking about signing, I would share with you that we have a document to sign later on, which just goes, confirms that the Douglas School Committee and the DTA have agreed to the elementary school before and after music lessons position. So I have that, have that here, which we voted on two weeks ago. I spoke with Mr. Riordan today, and I told him that I would bring them by tomorrow, so if you want to sign tonight, I will get them signed tomorrow, and we'll have it finalized, and that can go so that they can begin posting, I'm not posting, advertising for the music lessons.
Excellent.
And then one other thing that I didn't add in there, but I wanted to share real quickly, is I don't know sure how many saw the news that New York State has banned vaping and so forth, and I don't know if Josh wants to speak to this or not, but.
Was it first?
Nine, the first ones to ever banned it, no, they're the only ones who've banned it so far. They banned it for 90 days. Only thing that's available, I think, is some sort of menthol product and a tobacco product, but you cannot get any of the tutti fruity and popcorn and watermelon and all those other flavors that they presently have. You probably have seen the news, the numbers of students who are being adversely impacted, whether they are ill or have become casualties. This is a serious epidemic. I would fashion it back to the 1950s and 60s where they rolled their cigarettes up in their t-shirts, and everybody smoked. This is what's happening again. It is a nicotine product, it is addictive, it is also chemical in nature, and it is proving to be extremely problematic if parents are not paying attention. Matteronian sent out something, something about belt buckles now that have, and sweatshirt hoodies that you can now vape in and so forth. So it's become, they've become very creative, and it's the same thing that the American Tobacco Institute did, companies did, which is to just simply create a generation, multiple generations of addicts who are addicted to nicotine. This is exactly what's going on right now, and it is epidemic across the country, and it's not just at the high school level, it's elementary, middle, it's, when you advertise it as cotton candy flavored, I love cotton candy.
When you sell a hoodie that has like a hidden tube you can use to vape from, who needs that product? Who needs to vape?
Someone who was trying to, yeah.
Teenager, you know, or middle school kid, so.
And I just, I didn't add it in here, but I just wanted to share that it is, it's a real issue, and parents really need to be paying attention to what's going on there and keep an eye out for their children, because I'm concerned for their well-being.
Yeah, it's good to see it getting quite a bit of national attention right now, which is nice, and, you know, early on in the process, like you said, we don't end up like 1950s and have, you know, millions of kids addicted to this stuff, but.
So, and that was everything that I had.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Mainz?
I have one question. I don't know if it's the right place to present it, but the skate park that's part of our school, who is responsible for that?
That's not really part of the school.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out. Okay.
It's town property.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
On 8/29/19, I signed nine batches totaling $84,357.52. And on 9/5/19, three batches totaling $73,129.74. Anything? Anything? Be right there.
Any questions on Councils payable? Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. First up within that is our meeting minutes from August 8th and September 4th. So, we deferred the August 8th meeting minutes from last time, because we knew we had some amendments to be made. I believe those amendments have been made. So Ms. Keegan, did you have any other issues with the August 8th at this point?
No.
Anyone else have any other amendments, edits for the August 8th meeting minutes? Okay, if there are none, be looking for a motion to approve these.
I move to approve the August 8th, 2019 meeting minutes.
Motion from Becky.
Second.
Second from Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
Abstained.
One abstention from Ms. Mulder. Okay. Next up is our September 4th meeting minutes, which I remember this being a short, I think Philly was a short meeting, but there's a lot of minutes here.
Lots of minutes.
It must have covered a lot in a short amount of time, so. Did anyone see any issues with these minutes?
I did not.
If we have no amendments or edits, be looking for a motion to approve our September 4th, 2019 school committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion from Becky.
Second.
Second from Julie. Any other discussion? Comments? Questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none.
Okay. It looks like this is the Mr. Romano show again. So, Mr. Romano, if you want to come up and join us, and I believe you're inviting some We have enough cheers.
Ms. Floria, aye, yes. We'll get some more money.
Later.
The rest of my crew comes up. You're on, you've set a close.
Thank you so much.
Your own one, thank you. Did a great job in there.
Hello, I'm Shailin Floria. I am one of the Spanish teachers here at the high school. And I am requesting permission to use the school facility to provide information about the upcoming foreign language trip to the Galapagos and Ecuador for summer 2021. So, a little information I can give you about the trip. Thank you for letting me hold the meeting before this meeting. Also, by the way, there was a pretty good turnout. This trip is being planned for, like I said, July 2021. And the reason we're starting to advertise now is because if the kids enroll within the next couple of days, actually, they're going to take $200 off the overall cost of the trip. So right now, the trip is $4,020. So if the kids enroll, they can start biweekly payments, monthly payments, however they want to do that, which can be as low as $94 a week. But it would be even less than that if it is approved, if they can enroll before Friday. They'll take the $200 off. So the trip is a nine-day trip. We would fly to the capital, Quito, Ecuador first. And then from there, we would take a boat around the islands and then come back to Ecuador and fly home. And our requested dates are July fifth through July thirteenth, 2021, with our earliest departure date being July first and our latest return date being July seventeenth.
Well, it's a shame that my sister couldn't be here, because as I told Ms. Floria, she just went to the Galapagos Islands and with my mom. My sister's been around the world, like literally traveled every country, because she did a semester at C in college. And the reason why I say that is because she said in her own words that it is the most incredible trip she has ever been on. The boat, I don't know which cruise, I don't know if there's a specific cruise line, but it was also the cruise line that they went on. It's just, I'm just trying to sell this a little bit, but I just, and the reason why is because it is just an amazing trip. So I can't say anything bad about it. Lifetime experience.
You said you'd be taking a boat around the islands. Will you actually be staying on the boat? Will that be part of the accommodations?
Um, I don't think we're going to be staying on the boats. I think we're going to be staying on the islands.
Okay.
I think the boat rides wouldn't be more than a few hours. So we'll be on the islands. And there's actually an itinerary I gave, too.
Yep.
So throughout the itinerary, there, we're going to be, we're not going to be spending a lot of time on the boats. We're going to be getting off the boats and doing things like snorkeling and hiking and going to poncho making classes. And seeing the wildlife, like the tortoises and the flamencos and.
Is there a minimum number of kids you have to have to do the trip?
Um, yes, I believe the minimum is six.
And is there a maximum?
No.
Well, guaranteed seats are.
Guaranteed, so they say that.
I know they say that, but.
Guaranteed seats right now are twelve, but obviously, like, we went to Costa Rica and we took thirty-six students with us. So the more people who are interested, they're not going to steer anyone away who wants to go.
They're generally happy to sell more packages.
Yeah. And every six students brings an additional chaperone, so.
Sounds like you had some parents volunteering.
Yeah. I actually, I had some parents ask if they could come in.
I think Ms. Keegan's volunteering.
It just sounds like Mulder's volunteering also.
I don't know if students would want their parents to go particularly, but, I mean.
Can a, how old does a chaperone have to, can a chaperone be eighteen? Or is there a specific age?
I think they have to be at least eighteen, but I, I wouldn't take anyone that's under twenty-one.
Yeah.
But we're just requesting to be able to hold meetings for the trip at the school for hanging posters and.
So you've been through this before, so we remind you that everything that you're presenting indicates that this is not a school-sponsored trip, that the Douglas Public Schools are not supporting the trip, that this is outside of the scope of the school.
Yes.
Thank you for adjusting the cover page, getting that taken care of, so that does not indicate anything that, anything for Douglas High School. And anytime, any advertisement and any promotion that you do or any meeting that you do, it is incumbent upon you or whoever's presenting and whatever the promotion is, that it does not represent the school district. It is outside of the school.
Is this the same tour company we've used?
Yes, yeah, of course. This will be the third one with them.
And this is not until the 2021.
Right.
So there's a period of time before this is going to happen. Whole other year.
That's good.
Is there a cutoff date for when you have to register by?
Um, right now, the cutoff date is September twenty-seventh, but again, last year, they opened up enrollment later for people who, kids who didn't tell their parents about the meeting and then found out months later and was like, I want to go. So EF is really accommodating with that. But right now, the, the date is September twenty-seventh for closing enrollment, but they do reopen it if.
And seeing as it's two years away, if somebody enrolls and then decides, changes their mind, something happens, is there a refund?
You get a full refund, yeah. That happened with the last trip, a student decided to, to not go, and they got a refund from EF.
Okay.
Any questions, comments?
One last question. This, is this the website that people can go to that's on here? It's like W W E F tours dot com with a whole bunch of numbers?
Yes. That's the enrollment page. And I can give you an itinerary with that information. I have some in my classroom. So just tell Ethan to come see me.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, be looking for a motion.
So I move to approve the use of the high school facilities to plan and provide information to students regarding the non-school-sponsored trip to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands during the summer of 2021.
Motion from Kelly.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
All right, so the next one, I believe, is two out-of-state band trips.
Yep.
There are two marching band trips. We do these every year. The marching band represents DHS at the Woonsocket, Rhode Island Autumn Fest. That'll be on October fourteenth, 2019. And the Providence-St. Patrick State Parade, March twenty-second, get ready for it, 2020, at which time I believe we'd have flying cars and stuff, but whatever. There are standard trips we do every year. The cost of the district is, we do budget for the transportation for it. It comes in around, I think we budget around $400 per bus to do these trips. That's the cost of the district. But these are things that we do every year, and they're pretty good events for us.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Romano on this issue? If there are no concerns, be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the Monday, October fourteenth, 2019, trip to Woonsocket, Rhode Island, and Sunday, March twenty-second, 2020, trip to Providence, Rhode Island, for the Douglas High School marching band to participate in the parades.
Motion from Lisa.
Second.
And a second from Kelly. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Leclair, can you and your crew come up?
Could you guys grab my water? Oh, can you grab my water on your way up?
Yes.
So this is the out-of-state Spanish field trip?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Alicia Leclair, and I'm also a Spanish teacher here at Douglas. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm requesting permission to hopefully have a field trip to an auditorium in Providence, so it's out of state. But the alternative is Boston, and Providence is much closer, so I figured it would save time and keep the kids in school for a little longer, which is great for us. And it's a, just a day trip. It's like an hour and a half presentation or performance of Latin rhythms. So there's some dance performances and some music. I haven't been, so I'm not entirely sure exactly what it is, but it's an educational performance that is geared towards world language programs. So it would be on November twentieth, which is a Wednesday, and the show starts at nine forty-five. And I got a bus estimate from Telstone, so it would be one bus, because we would cap it at fifty students, which I'm assuming we probably wouldn't really get too close to that number, but if we did, that's great, but we'd cap it at fifty, so we just had to get one bus. We can get fifty, students like me. So then they have a certain number of teachers that can come for free, which conveniently is five. So if we have fifty students, then the ten-to-one ratio works out well, because the other thing is if you get six tickets, you get a free adult admission without being a chaperone who wasn't a teacher. So if I got enough teachers with me, then we wouldn't have to pay for any other tickets, if that makes sense. And the ticket for one show is nineteen dollars, and then the bus would be around three eighty-five for the trip. So depending on how many students end up coming, that would kind of change the price that the students would have to pay, but, so the more, then the cheaper it would be for the students, basically. And then they would be back both, like around noon. So we would leave at like eight-thirty, and then they would come back at noon and eat lunch right after that, and then go back to whatever class they had.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
This is open to all students, all ages?
Yeah, because everyone, I mean, the only language that we offer is Spanish, so pretty much everyone has exposure. And it's also Hispanic Heritage Month this month, so I'm going to be doing some things to kind of promote that. And then this is in November, which is a nice little tag along. And I, for my students at least, they're going to be like doing something in addition to, if they're going, then they're going to do something educational to bring back to show other students and things like that. So I'm planning something around that as well.
Excellent. Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, Ms. Leclair, be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, out-of-state field trip to Providence, Rhode Island, at the Bishop McVinnie Auditorium for high school students to attend the Latin rhythms performance.
Second.
Motion from Becky, a second from Julie. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Disney's next, I think.
Disney is next.
All right.
I might have to correct this one. Oh my God, I can't believe this is.
I'm Caitlin Bonin.
This is Emma Allen.
We're juniors, and we're the class officers for the class of 2021. We're here with our class advisor, Ms. Floria, to attain the, to obtain the committee's approval of our senior class to Disney in the year of 2021. Going to Disney with our graduating class has an endless amount of benefits, and it is a tradition that Douglas High School graduating classes have been upholding for twenty years. We've seen pictures and heard amazing stories from the past two classes while we've been in the high school, and we're hopeful that you are willing to allow us to continue this tradition.
So we feel like there are going to be many benefits to this trip. It allows us to get a glimpse of what college life may be like. We're going to be away from home, and we're going to be sharing a room with like three other classmates of ours. It also gives us an opportunity to share like a wonderful last experience with the people we've grown up with and gone to school with our whole lives. And we're aware that not all of our classmates will choose to go on this trip. We could plan a trip to Douglas House of Pizza, and it wouldn't be any different. However, some of us have never been to Disney or never even been on a plane, so this trip would provide us with a great experience to share with our friends and our teachers that we've developed really close connections with.
By making this trip a school-sponsored event, we know that the student handbook rules will apply at all times. This will remind us that we need to combat senioritis and continue to work hard in our classes and abide by the school rules. Of course, we all do this anyways, but allowing us to take this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity will give us the extra incentive to work hard. Besides, there are potential educational benefits as well. One Douglas High School graduate was so impressed by the animatronics that he saw in Disney that he went on to pursue a degree in electrical engineering and was in a master's program at Purdue University.
We realize that the cost of the trip may be an issue for some students, but we have worked tirelessly the past two years to fundraise for our class. We have held many more fundraisers than any class we've been in school with. Therefore, the cost of our trip will be less for each student. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight, and we will hope to consider approving this trip. If you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer that.
And I will say that I have been in contact with Foxy Travel, the same travel agent that has helped plan the trip in the past, and she did give me an estimate. I mean, this is based on roughly fifty students. Our class has ninety-six, with seven chaperones. And this is the pricing that she gave me for this upcoming year, so we are aware that the prices may be different next year. And she did say the price of this trip typically tends to go up each year. But I have the pricing information for four nights versus five nights. Our proposed dates are during April vacation, so April sixteenth through the twentieth or the twenty-first, depending on how many days we decide to go for. And things included are the round-trip airfare, the bus that takes us to and from the airport. The kids all get a dining card with a minimum of a hundred dollars on it that they can use while they're there at any of the parks to eat at. One of the nights, they get a private dinner, an event where they get to do a meet and greet with Mickey, and they get to go to a show and have like a dinner with each other. And then they have the option to visit the water parks, three water parks, and if we go to Disney, the four theme parks. But she did tell me that if we wanted to switch it up, we could go to Universal instead, which might be a little cheaper. She hasn't given me the information on that, the cost yet, but that would be something I would let the kids vote on if they decided they wanted to do Universal over Disney. But as of right now, that's the information that I have. So for four nights, she gave me a cost of around sixteen hundred per student. Five nights, seventeen fifty.
Right, not bad.
So you know that you'll need to come back and give us the definitives on the hotels that you're staying at, the final cost and so forth, but I know it's a long ways away, but just don't forget that you will need to come back and present information that is definitive as to where you're staying and what the final cost is going to be and so forth for the committee to approve again as well. Also, share with everyone that there are ways in which students can lose the trip, even if they have made their payments. Unfortunately, one of the difficult parts of being the high school principal is that sometimes students lose their trip. They need to maintain the academics, there can't be disciplinary issues and so forth. So that has been taken away from people. I just want to make sure you share with parents.
Yeah. I'm planning on having a meeting, hopefully, next month, so the kids can start making monthly payments. But yeah, I did go over all that with previous advisors who have taken the kids on the trip, and they did tell me that it can be taken away and there's no refunds given. So that does happen. The students and parents will be aware that they won't be given any refunds.
I think it's important to share with them that it has been taken away rather than it can be. It has been.
Okay.
Can I ask a silly question? Do you do the fundraising at Gillette at some point? Is that senior year, or does that happen senior year?
We actually just spoke with Ms. Hayes about this, and she said it starts as soon as March and goes until the end of the summer. And obviously, the seniors get first pick on working, but she says, she told us that we should reach out to the sophomore class, because they always need more people. So I think, starting this March, we can start working the Gillette booth.
So how will that be communicated?
I'm going to have a parent meeting very shortly with more detailed information. I just, obviously, I didn't want to do anything without getting the approval first. And Sharon from, Sherry from Foxy Travel just gave me this information yesterday, because she's still working with Ms. Noe on her trip and getting her cost, so.
You send the information off, or it will be blocked, too. I'm always on the lookout to, otherwise I'd like to.
Could you give us a little bit more information on the fundraising? I'm wondering about, it is, it is, you know, like a good deal on a trip to Disney, but I imagine for some families, it's still tough. So does the fundraising get split evenly? Do people choose how many hours they work? Is there, are there avenues that are more like anonymous for getting a bigger chunk of a pie? Do you, you know what I, you know what I'm driving at?
Yeah, so with Gillette, they said that they need thirteen students to work the booth. So the kids sign up to work the booth, and then they each get a hundred dollars every, each time they work it.
Okay.
And that hundred dollars goes directly.
I'm wondering about, it is, it is, you know, like a good deal on a trip to Disney, but I imagine for some families, it's still tough. So does the fundraising get split evenly? Do people choose how many hours they work? Is there, are there avenues that are more like anonymous for getting a bigger chunk of the pie? Do you, you know, you know what I'm driving at?
So with Gillette, they said that they need thirteen students to work the booth. So the kids sign up to work the booth and then they each get a hundred dollars every, each time they work it.
Okay.
And that hundred dollars goes directly to the school account. But it gets, it goes right to that student. The kids can choose to use that money for the Disney trip, they can choose to use it for class dues, whatever they wanna do.
So it is assigned to that student particularly?
But like, there's options for students to sign up for events and there's a ton of events. They do concerts, the Revolution Games, the, you know, Patriots Games. They do.
Also, parents can work. So if cost like for their student is scary to them, they can work. And so if I went with my mom and my dad, then I would get three hundred dollars towards my account.
And there needs to be a minimum of five adults working the booth, I think she said.
Yeah, there, obviously, like students can't run a booth at Gillette by ourselves. So our parents, there do need to be adults and whoever would like, however many adults each student takes, their money and their parents or adult money goes straight to them, so.
And fundraisers we've just done in the past is, like, we've sold the Krispy Kreme doughnuts. They're super popular and we always make a really big profit on. We're doing a booth at Oktoberfest this year and all that money is going directly into the class of two thousand twenty-one fund, so.
Fundraising is our thing. We're pretty good at it.
And we're doing a clothing fundraiser too, Douglas apparel.
Pure Vita bracelets, these like cute little bracelets. We're doing Douglas colors, so we love it.
Come to Oktoberfest.
I'll be in Disney.
Any other questions? Okay. Anyone like to make a motion?
I moved to approve the class of two thousand twenty-one class trip to Walt Disney World, Florida in April of two thousand twenty-one.
Motion from Lisa.
Second.
A second from Becky. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Tough act to follow. School Choice?
Yes.
So I am looking to close off Douglas High School to School Choice. And I, so there is, we're trying to kind of balance that there's a financial influx of money that you get for accepting School Choice students. But sometimes the difficulties of educating students who are moving, coming to the district can outweigh the benefit of of the financial benefits that we get. So we've had a pretty significant influx of students who've come in the last few weeks. We're looking to close it off sooner rather than later. Effective tomorrow, basically. Because the the floodgates have kind of opened and I think it's, it's, we need to kind of put an end to it right now and and say that we're full up, so.
We had had this conversation last year, if you recall, that we wanted, we, what we didn't do is we didn't close off the high school under the idea that, you know, there's, there's a benefit to it. But really, when most school districts do close it off in September, and it makes sense for us to do the same. The, you can see in in the presentation, the agenda item summary that Mr. Romano produced is that there, we will be providing opportunities should there be some extenuating circumstances for a student that needs to, needs to School Choice in, that that would be presented to the principal. If it's approved by the principal, he would then bring it to me and if I approve it, then we would, we would admit the student.
Did you guess or have a?
We had talked about, last year, I think we had talked about closing, the conversation we had, I think it was around October one, was that we wanted to try to close it at the high school. My sense is that probably the middle of September is a better time to close it than 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 October one. Because by October one, most of the first, well, good portion of the first quarter of the school year is already gone by, so. And we had talked, two weeks ago, that we were gonna come back and discuss the high school. And so I think we, we, we had talked about it in previous. We just never did it as early as as this in previous years. But I, I think it makes, it makes pretty good sense at this point.
Any questions, concerns?
They don't have the, which I, so I'm writing out a, do you have it there?
She didn't, she didn't produce this?
I mean, we could just do a motion that we close off.
Yeah, I was writing out a motion, but if you've got the one that we practiced.
So the motion here is that if if everybody wants to just sort of jump in and make a motion to approve closing School Choice for grades nine, ten, eleven, and twelve for the remainder of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, barring extenuating circumstances, that would be determined by the building principal and superintendent.
So moved.
We have a motion from Julie, a second from Kelly. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Thank you very much, folks.
Very good. So that only leaves, I believe, grade six and eight, six and seven, I think there's.
No, not seven, I think seven was.
So maybe six and eight. Maybe it's just six now, cuz six was the small, the very small enrollment number.
Yes, yeah.
It was, it was an anomaly. So I think it's only grade six that still remains open within the district.
Even that, I guess, is, is there, is there a point where in the school year where it makes sense to stop that? Even if, I guess, just for disruption, I don't know.
I mean, at this point, you know, if if somebody moves into town, they're gonna, we're gonna enroll them.
Yeah.
If somebody is, you know, if there are extenuating circumstances, they could, they could make a case for it. But I, I think that we, in all the years that I've been here, we've never really had a hard, fast, let's close School Choice at this point in time. I think at the beginning of the year, it makes sense to close it.
Yeah.
I just think it does because, you know, let's settle into the routine, these are your students.
Yeah, I would just, yeah, if if there are still ones that are open, that that's fine. Bring it up for next week. For the next meeting, it makes sense to close them. Again, if you guys think it's the right thing, cuz again.
Yep, and I don't know whether or not you could just piggyback it to this and just say, cuz I think it's only sixth grade that's open, so.
Do we know that? I guess I.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll wait for two weeks, yeah.
It's in one of the meeting minutes, I think, too.
From today, right?
One of the ones that we've just approved.
Well, we have a still.
Pardon for this brief intermission.
That long. Oh, here it is, we closed five and seven.
Yeah, we just closed five and seven.
As of September fourth, I think we're gonna have two and six.
And six and seven. And I have in the.
We closed five and seven a little while ago.
We closed five and seven from the meeting on the fourth.
So I think it's just two and six that remain open at this time.
Yeah, that's what this says.
So if you, if somebody wants to make.
So can we just make a motion to close all remaining?
You could.
Classes to School Choice at this point?
You absolutely can.
Okay.
So I move that we close all remaining School Choice, I'm sorry.
Grade levels. School Choice grade levels.
School Choice grade levels effective today for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year.
Second.
Motion from Julie and a second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Excuse me. Seeing none.
Okay, so then, that being said, Douglas is is completely closed to School Choice as of tomorrow morning, which is September, I mean.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
So you need to move to Douglas if you wanna go to Douglas.
Need to what?
You need to move to Douglas if you wanna go to Douglas.
That's right, you wanna, you wanna come to Douglas Schools, you're gonna have to move here. And I think you have one more item.
Please continue, I'll be right back.
If, if we could ask Mrs. Nsudi to come up and join us.
Good evening, everyone. So as you can see on your agenda item summary, I'm coming forward this evening to ask for the addition of a point six English learner teacher. We have seen an influx of students over the past five years. Believe it or not, five years ago, we were going back and forth betweening, between zero English learners, one zero, um, English learner. And as of today, we have fourteen English learners. Just last week, beginning this Monday, a student from Columbia joined our elementary grade five class. The student is non-English speaking through an interpreter. The mother indicated that the student is unable to speak, read, write, listen to any English. Given that, we really feel that our English learner teacher is unable to meet the needs of that particular student with the caseload that she's already supporting. So that is my request.
So we had had this conversation, as you recall, the last couple of years, we've been talking about the EL population. And as Laura mentioned, three years ago, we had our first EL student. We had one English language learner in the district who was a senior, as a matter of fact. And since that time, we've seen a little bit of an expansion. We reduced the teaching staff in EL lot, this year, this year. We had a point four, I believe it was, EL teacher here at the high school, which which we eliminated.
It's part of the reductions.
Right, part of the reductions. And the present EL teacher is managing three schools cuz there aren't any EL students at the high school presently. So she, because of the geography, she's able to, but I mean, she's on rollerblades because she's gotta go back to all three schools. And this is going, this, this will have some intense needs and we just can't manage them with the staffing that we presently have, which is a one, one teacher.
So I think it's important to explain too how we've been able to meet the needs of the learners that we have right now. Under the regulations, we're able to group students based on their English language proficiency level. So right now, at the elementary school, we have five students that are in grades two, four, and five. However, four of the five students are all within the same proficiency level. So they can be within a small group for direct instruction. So that allows us to have a little bit more flexibility with that teaching staff position so that she can meet the needs, you know, across the three buildings. But by adding in this additional grouping, she just can't do it. There's no way possible that she would be able to support this student who's gonna need intensive instruction by any ESL teacher.
And for this student that needs the intensive, the point six will be enough?
We do believe so. Under just the regulations, it requires us to provide two to three forty-five minute uninterrupted periods of instruction per day. Based on our preliminary understanding of the student's abilities, I'm preparing for at least three periods of a day of the day, as well as providing the teacher with a prep period, and that's how we came to the point six. I think it's important to note, though, that this right now will support the needs that we do have as of today. I want you to also be aware that this year, we have received sixteen home language surveys that have indicated another home language other than English. Out of the sixteen, only five have qualified for English learner services. I think the important thing that we need to recognize, though, is we have children coming into our district in multilingual homes. And this is now becoming the reality of the student population that we will be supporting. I actually took over as the English learner coordinator in two thousand and ten, when I was still a special education teacher. Reason being, my undergraduate degree is in linguistics and I was the only person in the district that had any connection towards the ESL background or what knowledge, I guess you could say. At that time, it was more to make sure that we were complying with our CPR audit that was going on at the time, making sure that all of the regulations requirements were in place, but we had no students. Our numbers, like I said, two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, we were at one. Two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we were eight, and now this year, we're at fourteen. So we're seeing that uptick and, you know, we, we keep saying it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. It is here and I, I really feel with the development in town, we're gonna continue to see an increase in our L population.
And we, we had had that conversation four, five years ago, that that was on, it was on the horizon and it was something that we were going to need to address. I, I remember sharing with the school committee when I was the high school principal that I had gone for my training and I was in a large cohort and they, they did around, around the auditorium, Mr., you know, number of EL students that that you, that the district had and, you know, a hundred, two hundred, one hundred, fifteen, one. And it was, it was an anomaly, it really was. But as, as Laura's indicating, this is a, there's an uptick. And I, I, I think that the committee needs to be prepared that going forward, there's probably gonna be even, even a greater need.
I have a couple of questions in that regard.
I'll do the best I can to answer them.
So for the students' needs to be met, going forward, would it need to be a one-on-one situation for instruction always? Because especially at fifth grade, I realize the change of buildings would be coming next year. And I'm also wondering if there's potential for this position, like this teacher, would they be able to have a small group if there was another student with the same language, with the same, so if you could sort of talk about like.
So first of all, I, we support five different languages at this time. They speak five different languages in the home other than English. The premise of English as a second language instruction, though, is all of the instruction is delivered in English. So you're using visuals, you're using, you know, building vocabulary development, working on listening and speaking, writing and listening skills. So what it comes down to, and I kind of spoke of it a few minutes ago, was based on where the student's proficiency level is how they're grouped. So this particular student, based on her specific needs, would have to be individual instruction because there's no other learners in that environment that are at the same proficiency level. I think that, you know, what we have seen, and it's only been a few days, the academic abilities of the student are quite strong. So I feel that as long as we're able to support the, you know, the English speaking, listening, reading, writing part of it, her academic fortitude is gonna be able to take her, she'll acquire it faster than some other students, I guess I'm trying to say. So, you know, it really is an uncertainty that we can't determine how fast she'll acquire the English language.
Do you keep the teachers on after, if she's a super fast learner? I'm just throwing this out as an example. Let's say in a year and a half, she's just like. So how does that work exactly? Do the teachers stay on board for other students who come on who have the need or?
So we've actually, we have had a fluctuation in our staff. We were at one teacher, actually, we're at a point five, we went to a one point five, we went back down to a one point oh. It really depends on the population of students that we do have.
And that obviously is determined in advance, obviously, as best you can. And that's, that's the hard part is you just really can't in April figure out what's gonna happen in your building in September.
Right, okay.
You do the best, you do the best you can to, and then that's why you, sometimes you have to come back and and ask for positions and so forth.
Okay.
So Becky, just to provide you with some more information as far as how we determine their proficiency levels. When the students enroll in the district, all students have, their families have to fill out a home language survey. If any other language is indicated on the home language survey, we have to screen that student to determine where their proficiency level is. So it's, you know, really important that families are talking about fluent languages that are spoken in the home, not necessarily, you know, we watch Dora the Explorer and we talk Spanish here and there. So once we determine their English language proficiency, if they are determined to be Ls, we put this support in place. Some of the students have services in a pull-out setting, some of the students receive their support in the classroom. And we kind of, you know, the ESL teacher and I sit down and determine what we feel would best meet that specific student's need based on their proficiency levels. And then in the early, well, like early January to mid-February, every year, the students participate in mandated testing. It's the WIDA access assessment. And that is a standardized assessment that's administered and it, again, determines their proficiency level. The students have to meter qualifying score to be determined English proficient. And we are still mandated, even if they're. And we are still mandated, even if they're determined English proficient, to follow them for four continual years as a former English learner. Just to make sure that they're continuing to meet um, with success, you know, and that their language isn't interfering with their education. So um, you know, there's definitely information uh, that's shared with us. And it's ongoing so that we're collecting data to have, you know, be informed with what we'll need. So uh, when it comes to budget time, we'll be able to kind of have an idea um, looking forward, you know, moving forward where we'd like to go.
Thank you.
And the financial impact?
All right, so you get that?
Yeah, so um, based on the point six, we usually figure fifty thousand dollars, that's kind of our range, we kind of start with. So thirty thousand at a point six. And um, I'm recommending, as you can see in the vote language, that um, it'd be paid from the general fund or the school revolving fund if, a little typo there. If funds are not available in the general fund. And the reason why it would get that way now is because as you see at the end of the year, I end up doing all of these reclasses. So if I can see, and if you're amiable to that, certainly, you know, I can accommodate it through vacancy savings or, or things that shift around because I do every other day um, during the year. To the extent possible, we'll, we'll have it in the general fund. If we can't, then we'll end up doing it the other way, but it'll be less of the reclasses at the end of the year.
Anybody have any more questions?
Just as a point of interest, a point six is, is never easy to fill. Never easy to fill because it's a part-time position and, and people are looking for full-time employment.
All right, there's nothing else for a motion?
Move to approve a point six F T E E L teacher for the ele, elementary school for an estimated thirty thousand dollars to be paid from the general fund or school choice revolving if funds are not available in the general fund.
Second. Lisa, second from Becky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before um, Laura leaves, if I could just share, I think that this is a good time to talk about the fact that, looking forward. As it gets to the point where we, we're looking at budgets and so on and so forth. We need to be aware and be cognizant that this is a possibility that this position, which is at a point six, a, a few more students move in. We may be able to hold the fort at the point six, we may not be able, we may need to expand it to a point eight or to a one point oh in order to meet uh, all the students' needs and so forth. So that is a very real possibility. You just don't know when a student is gonna walk through the door that's gonna require these services. And as you can see, we're seeing a little bit more of it. The point, the point six, I think at this point, as, as Laura was saying, holds us in pretty good stead for now. But all bets are off if additional students move in during the course of the year. Or as we see in the summer next year, this might need to expand and become point eight, one point oh uh, going forward. The other piece of it is that Laura has been holding down the fort. She was, it was the game of tag, you're it. Laura is not the, uh, E L is not her thing, she's our special education uh, team chair or director, if you will. And, and um, that's really what we want her to be doing. We had talked a little bit about the possibility of, uh, we have a woman who's been working in the district now for, I think, three years and doing a great job. That maybe can carry, carry on some of the responsibilities that, that, that Laura's been handling with regards to access testing and, and home, home assessments and so on and so forth. That, that need to get done. So that Laura can continue to focus on special education. But as we normally do in, in, in Douglas, we, you know, there's, there's. Wear a, wear a second hat, you know?
I have a question. When, when kids come into the district as a, um, to, they're not gonna be living in Douglas, they're not even gonna be staying here, they're like on a visa of some sort, they're an exchange student. Is the law a little different for exchange students?
We don't have any exchange students per se.
But if we did.
Well, honestly, I'm not sure of the answer to that question.
I'd have to review the requirements, but there is language around it and I do not believe we'd have to provide them with ESL instruction.
Yeah, I think there was a little bit of confusion on that because um, just out in the general public, um, and that's why, that's the only reason why I bring it up, but.
I mean, if they were, if they were to permanently.
Right, right, no, if they're just here temporarily.
But if, I think that, because they're temporary, I don't think there's an obligation to provide those additional services.
So if you had like a Chinese-speaking person, um. And then you had like somebody that only spoke French, somebody else that spoke something, could those all be grouped in one group or do they have to be?
Depends upon their proficiency level, so.
Okay.
Right. As to what, what command they have of the language. And again, it's, they're not taught in um, Chinese or they're taught in French, they're taught in English. And um, and uh, the hope is that the assimilation process and, and the support that they would get from the E L teachers would, would benefit them in small group environments as well, so. But my, 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 my point in all of that was that um, what we had talked about three or four years ago has come to fruition. And we anticipate it's gonna continue to do so. So that at budget time, one of the things that we talked about this morning is that we'll be looking at this to make sure that we can appropriately address everything that we need to address um, with the positions that we presently have. So we may be back. And, and, you know, we hope not, but we may be back if, if we get a new student. We may, we will, we will need to expand that, that, that position um, to accommodate any additional students. We're not, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do it with this position. But thank you very much for supporting it and I will post it tomorrow and um, hopefully we can interview. And as I said, you know, hopefully somebody who's interested in a point six position as opposed to a one point oh. Laura, thank you so very much.
Thank you. So I guess that closes our consent agenda, school business and operation management.
Hey, I put two things um, in, on your table uh, this evening. The first one, I'm giving you an update on the school choice revolving fund um, trend history and projection for FY twenty, including that one fifty-one, three nineteen. Last time I gave it to you, the formula did not include it in there, so I updated that. And we received from D E S E just today, the um, preliminary projection for the revenue for Circuit Breaker for FY twenty. So I've also included that number. What we had in there originally was nine hundred and fifty-four thousand projected for revenue. You know, we're very conservative um, with regard to that. So even the figures at the bottom there, you'll see that's an update to the, that's all updated, where it says twenty-one eligible students, et cetera. That's all updated um, pursuant to D E S E's um, preliminary file they sent out to all um, school districts uh, this morning. So I've updated that for you as well. So it's definitely more of a fund balance that we see there, um, which is good because we've, we have come to you with a, a several things, you know, since we've uh, yeah, started the year and we're barely into the year yet. So um, that's really good news. There, so I'd like to keep you updated on particularly those two accounts. And also I just provided to you this evening as well, a copy that was sent to us from um, the town administrator, Mr. Wojcik, regarding the Douglas Bean Awarded the Green Communities Competitive Grant. And included in that is um, fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars for the primary school LED lighting. So that's included in that, that grant package. So that was awarded. So I'm just informing you with regard to that. So we'll have to, um, we will be working with, um, Jeff and I will be working actually, and also Cindy's involvement with regard to the timing of it, it's her school. With Bill Konduff, town engineer, he'll be actually spearheading um, that, you know, all these projects uh, through the Green Communities Competitive Grant. So we'll be speaking with him soon and see how that's going to, um, you know, as far as the um, process, but also to work with Cindy on when is best time to do it. We would prefer, of course, the, either the February or the April vacation week, so that, you know, or next summer.
Some other projects that we've done where they've actually worked um, nighttime as well. So I'm not sure if that's a possibility or not. That building does not have a nighttime custodian here, which is problematic, so.
Definitely.
Okay.
And that's all I have for you this evening.
All right, any topics not anticipated? We do not need executive session tonight?
Nope.
Then I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-one. So moved. Motion by Becky, second. By Lisa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.